This meeting of the Gadsden City Council now come to order and the Chair calls on the City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business, and I'll ask everyone to stand, and Carter Rains will come forward and lead the invocation. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, help us to be safe and not to get hurt. Amen.
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 Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where are you going?
Very happy to have Troop 777 with us today. We'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions you would like at the end of the meeting. Otherwise, just enjoy the fun.
Yeah.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting on July the 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the account for the week of July the 8th through the 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor. Unfinished business, we have none today. Items nine through 15, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct public hearings, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against the property. This is for grass cutting that has been performed, and we have six locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. Number nine is 1331 Alabama Street, $886, State of Alabama Property Tax Division Strategic Muni Funding LLC. Number 10 is 501 East Chestnut, which has been paid by the owner. 1507 Garfield Avenue, $211, Tina Cox. 317 Bryan Street in District 6, $211, Susan Owen. 2219 Forest Avenue in District 6, $211, Virginia Gullisby. 304 Kaiser Street in District 6, State of Alabama Property Tax Division, and Eddie B. Collins. 2309 Scenic Drive in District 7, $241, State of Alabama Property Tax Division, Brad and Amanda Howard. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all six resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all six resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all six.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Gifts on Wings LLC has applied for an off premises only retail table wine license at 2401 Rainbow Drive. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Seventeen is a resolution appointing member to the Harrelson Architectural Review Board. This appoints Carol Norman for the term expiring September the 15th, 2013. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you to people who serve on these boards, they're non-monetary boards, and the people step up and give their time and talents to these boards, and just appreciate them doing it.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eighteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with S and M E. This agreement is an effort to combine several agreements for monitoring services at the landfills and transfer stations in the amount of $71,050. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I think we discussed this last week, and I had some questions, but, okay, I didn't get a chance to discuss it upstairs. I know we're combining all these contracts, and we're going from... Tell me that again, how are we doing this? Is the separate contractor's going to be doing this on the one contract, or what? Tell me again.
No, you've got one professional firm that'll be doing different services. There's mostly what this covers is gas and stormwater monitoring that's required by A.D.M. at those sites. All the previous contracts were separated by location and by that service, this just combines it because one company's doing it anyway, so just from a bookkeeping standpoint, it makes it that much easier for us.
So this is one company that was doing several different things?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Is this just the... Is this in the active landfills, or the ones that are closed?
No, this includes both. This is C and D landfill, which is active in East Gadsden, and the closed landfill, sanitary landfill on the mountain.
We had a contract with another engineering firm at one time on the closed landfill. That finally ran out, I guess? Engineering Services or something out of Birmingham, I remember.
Okay.
That was before your time, probably.
Yes, sir, it was before my time, but I'm being informed that that's correct.
Okay.
You might explain to our scouts exactly what you're talking about in the way of landfill.
What the Department of Environmental Management requires the city to do is to monitor stormwater that leaves off the site from these stormwater sites, to make sure that drinking water is okay, and to make sure that there's not a lot of contaminants in the water, as well as gas. There's... These landfills get buried, and what they can do is underneath, they create methane gas, I won't go too much into it, but it can be explosive, so they have to monitor those levels to make sure that it... Yeah, that there's no hazards. That's right.
Let me see if I can help a little bit too, Chad.
Yes, sir, please.
The President said... They might not even know what the landfill is. That's why we take our household garbage and trash and dump it into this landfill, and prior to... I forget what year Subtitle D came into effect, but anyway, we... Prior to that, we used to just go find a hole somewhere and just put all the garbage and trash in there and cover it up with dirt. And all of that trash and stuff seeped into our water table. And then the guys in Washington saw fit to put in a Subtitle D, and now you have to put a lining into a landfill. You just can't go find a hole somewhere and dump the trash, you gotta put a liner in there. It's almost like a swimming pool now. So it keeps that leach and all that stuff from getting into our surface water. But we're responsible for the old landfills to monitor those to make sure that that stuff don't get into our well water and stuff, and our drinking water. So that's basically what he's talking about here, so we have to monitor that. But it also creates gas, as he said, so hopefully that's a little bit better explanation about what a landfill is with all that garbage and stuff like that.
It's a mess, anyway.
Yeah, it's a mess.
Nineteen is a resolution accepting...
We need to vote.
We hadn't voted.
Go ahead and vote, yeah.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, nineteen is a resolution accepting conveyance of property at 2220 Hill Avenue. Jerry Collier has offered to donate this property to the city in lieu of further nuisance abatement proceedings. The city will have to pay the Alabama Department of Revenue to redeem. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twenty is a resolution authorizing satisfaction of a lien against property at 1546 Rose Street. Laura Benson has offered to pay $300 to satisfy the city's lien on the property. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twenty-one is a resolution requesting restriction on alcohol advertising. In an effort to discourage underage drinking, this urges businesses to display advertisements for alcoholic beverage at least five feet from the floor of the building where they are not visible from outside the business. And where they're not visible. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I think the young man who brought this to our attention is here. I don't know if he...
He's gonna speak and leave.
He's gonna speak later, okay. I don't know if he wants to say anything at this point, okay.
Well, I mean, if you want him to speak now...
No, it's okay, he can do it later.
Okay.
This is not something that is a law that's requiring this, it's a suggestion from the city and encouraging everybody to follow these guidelines and the advertisement.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, are there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple items to bring up under new business. If I may, I'd like to read them all. There are a couple of different topics, but I'd like to read them all and then collectively bring them up for consideration. First item is legal document 2011-270 authorizing change order number three to bid number 320 for the Albert Rains Boulevard Riverfront Enhancement Project in the amount of $6,786, bringing the total contract price after the change order to 715-169-16. The second item is item number 2011-272 authorizing acceptance of $337.34 for satisfaction of nuisance abatement liens on the property located at 2415 and 2417 Hollis Street in District 2. Second item... The third item, I'm sorry, is 2011-266 authorizing agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for infrastructure improvements at Yorah Brown Elementary School. The grant amount is $60,006.02, and the project is 100 percent funded through the state's Safe Routes to School program. And the final one is, of course, akin to that item in that it sets aside a budget item for receipt of the grant. So again, I'd like to make a motion that we consider these today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the three resolutions and the one ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt them all four.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the three resolutions and one ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four items.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items that I would like to introduce for consideration today, for unanimous consent to consider today. First document... These are two documents, and they're both related to the same thing, so I'll read both documents and ask for consideration. A resolution authorizing approval to apply for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice System Grant in the amount of $27,593. And the other one is authorized a memorandum of understanding between the City of Gadsden and Etowah County that this money will be used for the City of Gadsden, and that Etowah County will not be included.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both resolutions today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir. This is money that the police department... A grant that the police department will be applying for that will enable them to get portable cameras so that police officers on patrol will be able to record live any situation that they're in once they leave the vehicle. These are for portable cameras, so they can recall everything that happens outside of the police vehicle.
Okay.
Can I discuss something?
Yeah, go ahead and discuss.
Okay. You know, it's my understanding that these cameras are gonna run approximately close to $800 apiece, and I don't have a problem with this. As a matter of fact, I'm happy to do this, and they're talking about purchasing thirty, and I think we need to look at however many people we got on patrol, if it's thirty, forty, whatever, and we need to make sure every patrol officer at least have one of these. It protects several things, it helps several ways. It protects the police officer from allegations, it also protects the citizens from situations too. But the problem I have is there needs to be some teeth in this. If we're gonna spend that kind of money for that type of equipment, that it needs to be sure that there is a requirement that they make sure they turn these on. You know, we can't have an officer getting out and getting in confrontation and say he forgot it. You know, did he conveniently forget, or did something happen that he didn't want to be seen or heard, or whatever the case may be? And so there needs to be some repercussion to an officer who forgets to turn these on. If we're gonna spend $800 for some equipment, it needs to be used. That's all I'm saying. And I don't know what this council can do, if anything, to put some teeth in that. I know that's left up to the chief to do that, but I think we need to look at that. If we're gonna spend this kind of money for the equipment, we need to make sure that the equipment is used, and used at every opportunity. I hope I did that nice.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both.
Is there any other new business? Department reports, committees, bonds, boards, are they? Citizens Request, Ariel Hall Jr., is he available today?
Yes, sir.
Come on up here to the microphone. He wants to comment on the alcohol advertising that we passed. Give your name and address, please, to the city clerk.
My name is Ariel Hall Jr., and I live at 1183 Tuscaloosa Avenue.
Okay.
First, I would like to thank everybody for passing the law. It would make a really big difference for the kids and the youth now, and thank... It's gonna make a really big difference because peer pressure is a big issue nowadays, and now they can... They don't have to worry about seeing so many alcohol advertisements as low as they were, where kids this tall can see them, like just facing towards them. Thank you for moving five feet high because it will make a big difference in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council?
Mr. President, just a quick point, I'd like to thank that young man for expressing an interest in service. Not every young man your age that expresses an interest and even an understanding of things of that nature, so thank you for that.
He just happened to be a relative of mine, that's why.
We won't hold that against you. We won't hold that against you. Sorry, son, we're sorry, we're sorry.
That explains everything.
I'll leave that alone.
Mayor, you want to start today?
First, I'd like to commend you, the word peer pressure, and for you Cub Scouts here, that is one of the worst things that you have growing up, is kids who want to do the right thing, make good grades, do what the teachers and the coaches and everybody says, get harassed a lot from the ones who don't care about doing the right thing. And I think that's very, very good when you stand up and do the right thing like he did, and you guys there too, you need to keep that in mind as you go. If you've got friends that want you to bug the system and not do the right thing, you need to get some new friends. I want to say... Make a couple comments on Highway 77 widening. Actually, that has been going on for a long time trying to get that project done, and I will have to say that I was real pleased with the new highway director. You know, the state has a five-year plan, and you get on the list, but every time you get a new governor, you get a new plan. So that's not too good if you don't have a governor that wants to be sort of fair about things. But anyway, the new highway director, I read an article, he went around to all the highway projects that are on the map, and to decide which ones they wanted to start working on first. And Highway 77, a two-lane road, was the most highly traveled road, two-lane road in the state of Alabama, and I think it was around 28,000 cars a day go down there, so that's gonna be very important to us. And along with the completion of Airport Road, Black Creek Parkway, and now 77 widening project from Devan Low, it'll go all the way up to I-59, that's gonna open up a lot of commercial and industrial possibilities for the cities of Rainbow City and Gadsden. It's a state-funded project, but my office has been pushing this for a number of years because of the economic impact it will have, along with Jerry Mayberry, who was in my office, Senator Larry Means, Frankie Davis, who's over Economic Development and Governmental Affairs, and especially the city engineer, Chad Hare, because he's really worked hard on that the last... I say, well, I guess ever since you've been here, right, Chad? But that's gonna be a good thing for everybody in the whole county, not only the cities, and if we can get that other section of steel station four-laned from Sutton Bridge Road to 77, that's really gonna help the traffic process around here. And I guess that's all.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to see the Boy Scout troop here today. Thank you all for coming. You guys have a lot to look forward to, and as long as you keep your motto in mind, you know, as you go through life, you'll be okay. You will be okay. Troop 777, where are you located?
I'm charged by Crosspoint Community Church. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you all for being here. And the only other thing that I have is, Mayor, you talked about Highway 77 being widened. Can you get me something done about 759? I tell you, that's the biggest joke... That's the biggest joke I've seen in my life, being told me to be careful. That's the biggest joke I've seen in my life, where we keep... Continue to just... Continue to delay and put it off, and Chad and I are just disappointed, you know, with what we see and what we hear when we have meetings with state highway people, but it's coming one day, we hope. It's coming one day, we hope. That's all I have.
That, Highway 759, Megan Boulevard, and Highway 411 is just sort out of our hands.
Yes, it is. But we begged, you know, those people, you know, in Congress, you know, to give us a hand, you know, and see what they can do to expedite that, but it's... Everything that we asked for has just kind of fallen on deaf ears, so we shall see.
Well, if it's encouraging to you in any level, George Wallace campaigned in the 60s about a second bridge over the Cousteau River, and 20 years later, he got it, so I don't know how that helps you.
Well, it's been 20 years, so we ought to be there, but I'm afraid we're 20 more years out.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple quick items. Did want to recognize, and I think many of us have seen it in the paper, but I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the young man in East Gadsden, Jordan Madden, I believe, who received a letter from the president. Yeah, did want to take the opportunity to recognize him, and he took the initiative at seven to write a letter and received some information back from the president that he will never forget, so I think that's to be... That's commendable. Do want to also make a comment regarding the city finances. We received an update last week, and again, Gadsden continues to be fiscally responsible. Had a young lady say to me this morning that, you know, the city seems to have plenty of money. Well, the word plenty is relative. Let me be clear about that. The word plenty is relative. We are rainy day prepared in the city of Gadsden, and I think that that needs to be the distinction between plenty versus, you know, anything else that you can use to describe our financial situation. You know, we've been trying for some time to be fiscally responsible, and there are a lot of things that we want to do and would like to do, and some of it we are gonna do. But again, there's a balance, and I think, again, we, as a city, have taken the opportunity to be rainy day prepared, so, you know, please be mindful of that as you discuss the city's financial situation with others. And I think that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. I think the young people, particularly the Boy Scouts, picked a great day to be here. You can see your government in action and how government works, but at the same time, you can see how government is responsive to the citizens, and that's what we're here for. Ariel came to us a few weeks ago with this issue about the alcoholic advertising, alcoholic beverage advertising, and as you can see, a few weeks later, we have a resolution on the table to pass what he asked us to do. And that's how government should be. Government should be responsive to the people that we represent, and that's why we're here. And so again, you picked a great meeting to come to, to see your government do what it's supposed to do. And again, Ariel, we thank you for your involvement, and stay strong, and keep up the good work. I think maybe by the time you get a few more days, I'll be out, and then you could be the next council member, we'll keep it in the family. I mean, I'm sorry. Anyway, again...
You can take over now, here.
I know somebody wish, but anyway, you know, and that's what it's all about. We've got to be responsive to the citizens and to the people that we represent. And I'm hoping, again, and I reemphasize, because I know we've had a problem over the years trying to get our civil service law changed. I brought up that issue a few minutes ago about the cameras. If we're gonna spend that kind of money for equipment, it's there to protect the officers and our citizens, but if they're not gonna use it, then we're just wasting time and money, and I have a serious concern with that. But as a council and as an administration, we don't have any control over that. That's why I really have an issue, is that we're gonna buy this equipment, give it to those officers, and then it's gonna be up to somebody else to tell them that they need to use it. And if they use it, and if they don't use it, they're gonna be setting the consequences. And I think that sends a bad message to that department and to other city employees. When there's a directive given by the mayor to other employees, then they answer directly to the mayor. If there's a directive from this council, a policy from this council to the police department, if they do it, then good, if they don't, there ain't nothing we can do, because we have a civil service law that's antiquated and outdated and needs to be changed. And I would hope that the citizens of this community would get an uprising to meet with our local legislative delegation to change that. I think we're one of two cities in this entire state that have this system. Now, that ought to tell you something. Now, that ought to tell you something. If we're the only two cities in the state, if there's only two cities that have this type of system, there's something wrong with the system. Otherwise, there'd be a whole lot of cities with this system. And it's one of those things you just can't get rid of because of politics. And when it comes down to protecting the citizens of this community, it shouldn't be left up to politics. It should be left up to protecting the citizens and not some political whim or somebody else's. But anyway, I'm getting off my soapbox. I just wanted to bring that to the attention again. Hopefully, by the time the legislative delegation... I mean, the next legislative session come, we'll get the delegation strong enough to pass that and take the police chief and the fire chief out from under the civil service law, not the officers. I want to be clear on that. We're talking about the administrative people.
I'd just like to welcome the Boy Scouts here this morning. It's good to see you young men out and all of them heading on the right path with their oath. Want to commend Mr. Hall back there. Well-spoken, well-mannered young man, took up a cause, and that's great. Commend you for that. Might expand on what Debrick said about rainy day. I was talking to the mayor of Tuscaloosa the other day and, you know, the tornado that came through there, they said they had to take out $10 million out of their reserves to just survive through that. And that's probably not all, but we have a little reserve, but it could be wiped out in a heartbeat, so it's something that we need to keep in reserve. So, that's all I have.
Ben?
Yeah. The Boy Scout, how many of y'all are above tenderfoot?
Everybody.
Well, I want to announce that I made it all the way to tenderfoot. And if I can get here on tenderfoot, look what you can do with eagles. Why don't y'all stand up, turn around, and let your mama see you on TV? Take a sweep of y'all. Stand up, y'all, turn around, and let's get y'all a good picture.
Ben, while they're watching TV, why can't we ask them to recite the Boy Scouts motto while they're on TV there?
While we doing it, too. Can y'all do that?
Can you do that?
That's a good idea, Billy. All right. Thanks, y'all. That was great, really. One thing I want to say about Wall Street and the mainstays over there. Last week, we did the Ritz Theater. But I want to commend Alabama City Bank, that's now, what, Wells Fargo? You know what it is? Jerry's Pharmacy, Old Clyde Dollar's antique store, the Ritz Theater. These are people who have stayed. And this morning, I want to kind of announce the new businesses going in over there. It's tools are more on Sansom and Wall Street. Y'all, Larry Cook's put up a pretty good store, tools and everything over there. I like to announce new businesses. And Larry Cook's doing a great job. Y'all drop by there and see him and see what's going on.
What kind of product is that, Ben? What kind of product does he have there?
He's got all a assortment of tools, but then when you go in, he's got vacuum cleaners. He's got household stuff. It looked like a real nice trade day. And to me, that's something else.
That's saying a lot.
But if Larry ain't got it, come see Ben up at the longest trade thing on August. Only his lapel cameras. We brought that in public safety, what, Billy? Robert about two, three weeks ago discussed it then. And he was talking about Ariel bringing up something two weeks ago and it becoming a reality. This is another one right here. And I commend him for doing this on his part. But we brought this up. I saw it on TV. They said it was 60 bucks apiece. Well, that got my attention. I walked in this morning, they set it up to 800. That's not a bad increase in three weeks. But anyway, I'm going to hold off until we see what kind of the burn grant goes through and all this sort of stuff and we absolutely have the money in hand, then I'm going to start running my tooth about how they ought to be used and so on and so forth. But I'm looking forward to it, y'all. I think it's going to be a plus for the police department. I really do. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, we enjoyed having y'all here this morning. Are there any questions that anybody has? If anything we did this morning that you didn't understand?
Scouts?
I'll get Robert to explain it to you.
By the way, his name is Robert now.
Let me say this. I've had a lot of citizens ask me, when are we going to pay Megan Boulevard? We're not. That's a state project. We don't have any control over it. But I've had so many people ask me, when is that going to be done? I don't know.
Chad hasn't updated.
He hasn't answered. Chad hasn't answered.
But that's not a city project. It's a state project. We don't have any control over it.
You have any ideas?
He can give us the answer that the state gave us last week.
Yeah, I think I told you about two or three months ago. It'd be in four weeks, but the last I heard, it was two or three months. They had to replace a lot more concrete slabs than they first expected when they took off the top layer. So, they're having to do a lot more rehab is the reasons I'm getting. All right. Dale?
Okay. If it's not that thing else, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
So moved.
This meeting is adjourned.